Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank you all for coming. Tonight's meeting is the Staff and Students Recognition, it's a special action meeting, June 16th, 2015. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you could please silence and turn off your cellphones and note the emergency exit. We could have a moment of silence for staff who have recently lost loved ones and students and families that may have recently lost loved ones. And if we could stand for the flag salute?
I'm the United States of America. I declare my vote, I wish this stands. One nation, God, individual, justice, law.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members of all district schools, the Herald News, The Trends, The Record, Aimless Milford, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney and Cable Vision of Warwick, and posts to the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town halls, township library, and all district schools. Roll call, please. Mr. Babbitt. Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dever. Mr. Drew. Mr. Booty. Mrs. Cappy. Mrs. O'Brien. Mr. Robin. Mrs. Schultz. Here. I need a motion to approve the following resolutions. Robins of the board going to executive session at the end of the meeting for approximately sixty minutes for the purposes of discussing personnel, student matters, negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. Except, I think we need to amend it to read, "Nine o'clock, executive session," since we have a meeting set up. Need a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Richika. Do you contend that you're right?
This evening is basically, let's get out of the war. We are closing up the school year, so everyone's busy. Final exams have started at the middle school. I believe tomorrow they start at the high school. And please keep in mind that the moving up ceremony for McAdoo School will take place next Thursday evening at noon at seven o'clock, and that will be in the high school gym, so dress lightly. And also, the high school graduation is slated for Thursday evening on the high school field. And again, depending on the weather, dress lightly, but we look forward to the ceremonies and moving into the end of the school year, so thank you.
Thank you very much. As far as the president's report, I would, I don't want to steal Jamie's thunder, but I would like to thank the board members for playing in the Relay for Life softball game against the West Milford Township Council members. I guess you can give us an update on that later on in the meeting. But I wanted to thank all those board members for participating and the family members that also helped out, children, siblings, those kind of things, it was great, so thank you very much. In addition to that, we have negotiations that we can discuss during the executive session at the end of the meeting. So, Mrs. Cappy, would you like moving education? Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first in five minutes for each petitioner, for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests, limited to five minutes per petitioner, will be allowed. Is that the end? Okay, so we're going to move petitions and requests to the end of the meeting. I think I'm going to need a motion to amend that. Okay, okay. We're going to move right on to the recognition. Sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'm Mr. Richika, interim superintendent, and I want to welcome you here once again. We have lots of awards and recognitions to take place, so I'm not going to waste any time. When your name is called, please come up and receive your plaque certificate or whatever gift that we're going with. But I do want to announce that the first group of individuals will be our retirees. Of course, we never know who's going to show up and who will be here or not, so please be patient, but I'm going to start. All these retirees have experienced anywhere from five to thirty-nine years, so God bless those people that have been here for more than thirty years. So, we're going to start off first with Gregory Drenning, industrial arts teacher. Gregory, there. Douglas Gacken, one of our librarians. Harold Peck, school bus driver. John Garrity, school bus van driver. Renee Tripp, learning disabilities teacher consultant. Lorraine Caldwell, cafeteria aide. Elizabeth Fredder-Stray, school bus van driver. Elizabeth Kaminski, cafeteria kitchen worker. John Monahan, head custodian. Diane Johnson, special class A. Susan Hanley, special education teacher. Marilyn Heim, social worker. Richard Cox, head custodian. Susan Tangara, special educator. Thirty-four years of service, up to here. James Chrisbaugh, supervisor of social studies. Anne Darling, kindergarten teacher. Michelle Harold, grade three teacher. Cheryl Hicks, special education learning disabilities consultant. Sean Poppy, physical education. Neil Holster, supervisor of occupational education, professional. So, we're going to continue now, I have a special presentation. Once again, I would like to especially recognize a student who has been extremely helpful all through the year. She attends our board meetings, and she is very, very informative. And when we listen to her speak, it's like we're watching one of the major news channels and listening to all the information because she is that articulate, she's that mature, and it's no wonder that she's going off to Princeton University. So again, I'd like to honor this, Nicolette Bianciolo. At this time, I'm going to invite up Dr. Mapos, who's continuing the program.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. To the Department of History and Social Sciences, it's proud to present winners of the Elementary National History Day. It's important to note that this is the first time that these elementary students in our entire district entered the National History Day. Not only did we make it to the regional finals, we had two students make it to the national finals in Kentucky, but their parents drove them down to Kentucky to compete. And I am honored to give these awards out to G. E. Jones, Paradise Falls. Axel Malatac, Westbrook. Timothy Butcher, Marshall Hill. Francesco Petrasillo, Maple Road. And last but not least, Colin Clinton, Westbrook. Next, the following Macbeth School student is being recognized as a finalist in the Macbeth School's 2015 National Geography Day. Benjamin McRae, first place winner. Thank you very much.
The following students are being recognized as winners of the Elementary spelling bee. Riley Knight, from Mathewa School, first place winner.
From Maple Road School, Amanda Burns, first place winner. And Brianna Lang, runner-up.
From Marshall Hill School, runner-up Dylan DeVries. And first place winner Alexandra Bonano.
From Paradise Falls School, runner-up is Leah Payne. And first place Juliette Van Damme. I'm also happy to stand in for Mr. Novak, from Upper Greenwood Lane School. Runner-up is Thomas Dinan. And winner from Upper Greenwood Lane School, Ruth Mulligan.
Good evening. I get to present the winner from Macbeth School. My pleasure to present Kieran Rose O'Shea.
Good evening. We are pleased to announce the following student to be recognized as West Milford winners of the 2014-2015 American Legion Safety Essay Contest. I'm here with Mr. Robert Campbell, depending on the stipulation. First place winner, both local and in our county, Destin A. Block, from Macbeth School. From Westbrook School, second place locally, Skylar Greenberg. And from Macbeth School, third place winner locally, Sarah Bestinelli.
In the same vein, who are recognized, following student is being recognized as West Milford winner of the 2014-15 American Legion Safety Coloring Contest. Winner, first place winner, local and county, Owen Cole, Paradise Falls. Good evening, West Milford High School, as a first place winner in the American Legion High School Oral Tourist Contest. Presenting this evening is Mr. Robert Campbell, American Legion Contest Chairperson, and the winner is Andrea Hilario.
That following Westbrook student is being recognized as West Milford's finalist for the Partnership for a Drug Free New Jersey Fun Things to Do Instead of Drugs Fourth Grade Folder Competition, with Sophia Burke-Hawker, she's on her team.
Okay, the following students are going to be recognized for their achievements in Special Olympics. I'd like to invite up Coach Clay, coming up. Okay, as well as assistant coaches, Lungaro and Skeets, come on. So I'm going to call out the athletes' names and the competitions they competed in. First up, Matthew Burlam, basketball bowling. Zion Clark, track and field. Devon Boyd, basketball, track and field. Joey Grilly, basketball, bowling, track and field. Bobby Dudnap, track and field. Vincent Freeman, basketball, track and field. Spencer Holden, bowling, track and field. Kara Gaddish, track and field. Destiny Garrity, track and field. Heather Arity, track and field. Trandy Gossett, bowling. Maxie Gould, bowling. Angelina Guerrero, basketball. Maggie Dunjari, basketball, bowling. Haley Haptek, basketball, bowling, track and field. Cory Holter, basketball, bowling, track and field. Todd Hilmer, basketball, bowling, track and field. CJ Huerta, basketball, bowling. Victoria Jaworski, track and field. Jacob Kaminski, basketball, bowling, track and field. Nathaniel Lesch, bowling, track and field. Nicholas Lesch, track and field. Michael McLaughlin, basketball, bowling. Kate O'Neill, basketball, bowling, track and field. Megan O'Neill, basketball, bowling, track and field. Jet Potabano, basketball, track and field. Edward Riley, basketball. Jonathan Rio, basketball. Taylor Sampson, basketball, bowling, track and field. Ben White, basketball, track and field. Ryan Becker, basketball, track and field. Brooke Borsetti, basketball, bowling. Let's give Brooke another round of applause. Kelly Mutterey, basketball, track and field. Allison Kissler, basketball, track and field. Sebastian Mara, basketball, bowling, track and field. Molly McEwen, basketball, track and field. Ryder Schuber, basketball, bowling, track and field. Debbie Stern, track and field. Logan Traun, basketball, bowling. Joey Basbury, basketball, bowling, track and field. And Jeffrey Youngrin, basketball, bowling, track and field. So those of you who are familiar with our Special Olympics program, this cannot be done without the devotion of our coaches, but also of our volunteers. So can we have all of our volunteers in the audience, please come on? So while our parents take some pictures, we just want to shout out to Coach Clay. Coach Clay was recently area of criminal. She was recently, in the past year, she was selected to coach. She was recently, in the past year, she was selected to coach in the National Summer Special Olympics Games. But this summer, she will also be coaching in the World Special Olympics. Alright, now with the show. Great job guys, great job athletes.
Next on our recognition is the award winner, first place winner from Paradise Gold, New Jersey, Matthew Julia Schneider.
Good evening. This time I'd like to present the West Milford Beautification Committee Shirt Logo Contest. First place winner, Cassidy Owen. Our second place winner was Taylor Quinn. Taylor Quinn also won the Lions Club International Peace Poster Contest. She was our first place winner in that as well. At this time, I'm gonna present our McAfee School Citizens of the Month. So if there are any 7th grade citizens of the month, if you would all please come forward, we'll call them out one by one, and then we can applaud for all of them at the end, please. So if you're a McAfee 7th grade citizen of the month, please come on up. As you can see now, everyone is here, so we will run through the list. If these guys are here, I'll go ahead and give them their certificates. Sophie Kuar. Ryan Schwartzman. Madison Doctor. Lancy Yang. Evan Brown. Dave Arnicio. Alvia Di Meda. Aaron Haan. Samantha Gagey. Jonathan Kenny. Anna Brand. Veronica Collet. Sam Loretano. Ashley Stein. Darren Bucin. Nicholas Puna. Megan Rampolo. Nasia Dela Cruz. Terry Malata. Riley McGill. Mary Bremsky. Steven Rizzo. Magic Fadden. Katie Candray. Marissa Airman. Ashley Penn. Ashley Warburg. Sidney Williams. That concludes our 7th grade, the 7th grade of honor round of course for these guys. There are any 8th grade citizens of the month, please come on up. Michaela Martin. Valia Casadre. Samantha Lyon. Amanda Roth. Lindsay Sanner. Alexandra Mansky. Julie Janicek. Dana Kelty. Connor Partington. Babe Ritz. Vanessa Seidner. Frances Sturries. Josh Bueno. Elizabeth Lynn. Matthew Flonis. Tyler Nicole. Avery Standier. Katie Choma. Olivia Delolio. Denise Verney. Jay Furball. Chris Gomez. Lydia Saran. Joseph Caruso. John Popenowski. Kayleen Rose Osanan. Mary Kilwinton. Okay, thank you all already, baby.
Hello. I'd like to present our award tonight to our third time figure in the special awards.
Just to give you a little information, both science and equal leaders of science are host competitions for different grade levels. And this year I had a question being posed for the third time student for the freshman. And while other schools were working, they have other schools participating. We had two exceptional students do it this year, which led us to have a six point in the whole state of New Jersey, and also one of our students in the top 10. So that's a combination to middle school science teachers and the more freshman competition teachers also. So I'd like to present the award to A.J. Coles. This is a certificate. And also David Pella. And another 11th grade also gets the fact that he is in the top 10 of the bowl to the men's world championship. We had two young gentlemen who participated in the project guidelines contest run by the Accrual Foundation and Prudential Insurance. We're very pleased to announce that both Bobby Holt and Paul Roth were one of the top three finalists in New Jersey. Tonight we present Paul Roth. Also Met Matters at the High School. We have an honor society that we have the privilege of having Sam Benarski and Samantha Mauer as officers along with President Tanner U. Hux. Congratulations.
On behalf of the Department of History and Social Sciences, it is a great pleasure in recognizing these four students for their outstanding contribution in debate through parliamentary procedure regarding the high school Model United Nations team. First, Michaela Kozen. John Gomez. Michael Galieru. And the president of Model United Nations, Nicolette Angelo.
Uh, next is Mr. Borno. We'd like to recognize the following high school students for their work on the Onyx Yearbook Staff. The staff has received an honorable mention recognition for outstanding work in Valtor's yearbook. Valtor honors approximately 13% of yearbook staffs from across the country with this distinction. The students are Timothy Britton, Emily Green, Melinda MacArthur, Kelsey Monteverdi, Peyton Porche, and Mackenzie Porche. I'm gonna try to do these quickly, but I got a lot to do, so bear with me. Okay. The next group of students are from the McAfee School, and they are recognized for being selected to the North Jersey Area Band. Sidney Sintron, Megan Curlin, Stephen Lang, and Cassie Peck. Our next group of students are from the high school, recognized for being selected to the North Jersey Area Band. Samuel Benarski, Kalen Solcienki, Matthew Biengo, Martin Galva, Emily Green, Megan Hogan, Alex Kurson, Rebecca Cronya, Aubrey Leving, Melinda MacArthur, Rose Martis, Zachary McIntyre, Charlie Newberry, Steven Shaheen, and Alexis Silverman. The next group are high school students recognized for being selected to the next level, which is the Region One Band. They are Samuel Benarski, Matthew Biengo, Rebecca Cronya, Zachary McIntyre, Charlie Newberry, Steven Shaheen, and Alexis Silverman. These last three I ask to stand for a moment, because they have been selected to the New Jersey All-State Band. They are Matthew Biengo, Rebecca Cronya, and Zachary McIntyre. We also had two students, for the first time in many years, selected to the North Jersey Junior Region Choir. They are Elizabeth Lynn and Carly Minnie. Our next group of students from the high school are recognized for being selected to the New Jersey Region One Jazz Choir. They are Jeremy Barton, Caitlin Camerino, Nicolette Nangelo, Inas Salgation, Chris Sansone, Steven Shaheen, Hannah Gordon, Megan Johnson, Kaylee McGraw, Craig Todd, Jake Winnett, and Danielle Zunoni. Our next group of high school students are recognized for being winners and participants in the West William Patterson University's Art Start Art Show, which will place in December. They are Ariana Blower, first place. Gia Halloran, honorable mention. Kelsey Ross, honorable mention. And Patrick Clark, artist. Our next group of students are recognized as West Milford winners of the Young Artist Award sponsored by the Ringwood Manor Artists Association. We had a lot of winners this year, and we actually had the best in show too, let me give it away, but it was pretty very really well represented. We'll start with Robert Orlando, second place ceramics, twelfth grade. Samantha Maynard, second place ceramics, eleventh grade. Sophia Zemser, honorable mention art, eleventh grade. Ariana Blower, honorable mention, eleventh grade. Phoebe Smith, honorable mention, art, eleventh grade. Jean Wang, third place art, ninth grade. Emily Botner, third place, third place art, twelfth grade. Grace Lamandowicz, first place art, twelfth grade. And our best in show, Sarah Shonka. Oh, Ariana, don't look too far. Yeah, one more. Following high school student is being recognized as West Milford winner of the Wallfield Ballet High School Art Show. First place digital, second place paint, Ariana Blower. And one more, this young lady. Following high school student is recognized as West Milford winner of the Congressional Art Competition, Scott Garrett, Fifth District, Ariana Blower. Alyssa Mill. And Julian Horn. Congratulations. This is the first time for us at West Milford, and this, this is kind of cool. The following high school students are being recognized as West Milford winners of the New Jersey State Governor's Award Theater Competition. Fourth place improvisational pairs, Victoria DiPaolo and Mary Soriano. Okay. It's fourth, are you here? Next award is for the Passaic County Film Festival Award, presented certificate by our TV teacher, this is Carol Thorb. I'll let you announce who it is.
Thank you, Madonna. You won third place in the short film category at the Passaic County Film Festival.
And... Last one for me. The following high school MacIntyre School students are recognized for Highlander Indoor Color Guard Championships, Musical Arts Conference Silver Medalist, Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network Silver Medalist, Winter Guard International Eastern Finalist, and Madawan Norwatt East Haven, first place. They are Tim Britton, Erica Fernandez, Damian Nala, Serenity Jackson, Sarah Jones, Abigail Katsmar, Coral O'Conne, Geneva Owen, Sophia Saran, and Ashley Oliver.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here as the athletic director, supporting our student athletes, and recognizing some very special ones like that. The following high school student is being recognized as West Milford recipient of the New Jersey State Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete Award. And that recognition tonight goes to Tanner U. Hoss. As Tanner arrived to put him, I'm going to jump to another award. By the way, Tanner is also a three-sport athlete, four years at the high school, and a valedictorian, so for those who say, that. And for that, Tanner was also awarded the Football Scholar-Athlete Award, Passaic County Chapter, the National Football Foundation, and College Bowl Fame. I'm pleased you go ahead and wear that message. The following high school students are being recognized as the nominees for the Passaic County Athlete of the Year Award, representing West Milford, and that's Brianna Chafari and Sam U. Hoss. We'd like to also recognize Brianna as the nominee for the National Women's Sports Award for West Milford High School, where she got to go to a Division One college basketball game, right? You play? You know we play? Do we play back? Same job? But we always try to pick someone who represents not just, you know, academics, athletics, but certainly sportsmanship. Congratulations, Brianna. The following high school student is being recognized as a recipient of the Burden Records Charlie Newhill Support Scholarship Award for West Milford High School, that's Jared Calice. For the final recognition for us tonight for athletics, I'd like to call Mr. Arthur Jakes, our boys' track and field coach, would like to present a special award to one of his athletes. I'll let Mr. Jakes briefly explain it. This athlete has shattered some records for track and field at high school, and he's a gold medalist. To recognize him, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Jakes speak, but he is the gold medal winner, state champion, the 400-meter boys' track, Saint Jenga Pedred.
First of all, Mr. Jenga, it's been a long time, and you should never give me a microphone, but that's okay. Let me explain very quickly what Saint has done for our art track and field program this year. Not only was Saint undefeated in all of our duels pretty much all year, Saint went on to our conference to take first, second, first place in three events, plus helping our 4x4 take second. He moved on to our county where he took three second places, and that was the worst it got. From that point on, he went to the state sectional meet, taking three first places, the first time ever in West Milford history, almost the first time in Passaic County history. However, somebody else did the same thing in another meet in Passaic County, we won't mention his name. And then he moved on to the group meet, this is all groups in all of New Jersey, Group Three, took first place in the 400-meter, third place in the 200, and then goes to the arena champions, and a couple acts of fate happened for him, got into the top eight, and then I'm taking first place in the whole state of New Jersey in the 400, running toward his state championship. That is the first time ever in West Milford history, and it's also the new school record for West Milford, so congratulations, Saint.
It is my pleasure to introduce West Milford winner of the Red Cilio Scholarship Award to Jordan Ciragello. The following high school student is recognized as West Milford's recipient of a full scholarship to study abroad in France during his senior year, and that's Brianna Hope. The following students are being recognized as recipients of the Rochester Institute of Technology Award for Outstanding Achievement in Computing. The students are Kristen Agostinelli and Nicholas Mays. The following students are being recognized as recipients of the Rochester Institute of Technology Award for Outstanding Achievement in Innovation and Creativity. Ariana Blower and Liam Heiser. The following student is being recognized as West Milford's recipient of the Dwight D. Eisenhower Leadership Award. Welcome, U. P. Tellegrino. The following student is being recognized as West Milford's recipient of the Welbly Book Award, Carly Richardson.
Okay, so the last recipient is somebody very, very, very important here in West Milford. An Outstanding Teacher of the Year for her great work without children, and Marshall Hill, a dedication to students, collegiality with staff, and most of all, just for being herself. But it's an honor to also include here that she is the Passaic County Teacher of the Year for 2015-16, so she will be receiving a crown before the end of this four-year, and to carry on through her next year. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Mrs. Sean Ryan Smith. Lovely certificates and even nice presents that you can all have fun when you get home, so it's a pleasure. I truly want to thank everyone for being here, especially the Board of Education for making this time available, so that we can honor our students. As you can see, West Milford truly represents a district where we can truly be proud of our child children from K through 12, students in technology, art, music, world language, English, we go through the whole thing. We see multiple boards, and we ended up in very high standards and high recognition. So we're proud of everyone. Your interim superintendent, although we've been here a few months, but we're truly proud of our staff, our outstanding principals, Board of Education, and the administration, and most of all, the families that work with us. Truly is, I say this all the time, it's got to be collaboration with community and the school system, and I think we're in a good direction, and I certainly want to keep that going. But before I finish, I just want to acknowledge that I did have the pleasure on Friday morning, along with Mr. Esther and a few other people from the high school, to celebrate something outstanding for our district, two outstanding students, and that was Tanner U. Hoss, who was our valedictorian when he went to Rutgers University. He kind of showed up on Friday, he had a jacket tied on with a tie clip, it was looking mighty fine, it was a great event. And also, baby that we heard her name mentioned multiple times, Nelson U. Torian, very proud of her hard work, Nicolette, you. So at this time, I would like to invite you, we're going to take a little break, please come out, have some refreshments, there are some good cookies up there, and they look a lot better on you than they do on me, so please help yourselves, and thank you so much for coming.